Hello guys, good morning. At least this morning here, I don't know what time it is. What time did you guys wake up today? Two. Tune in on here. Let's see, we have four people attending, we have twelve registered. So we wait a couple of seconds until everybody else shows up. What time did you wake up today, guys? Oh, let me post a poll about the review, okay. I woke up at eight two, I woke up at eight two, pretty early, pretty early. You guys are pretty determined. Yeah, I'm pretty sure you guys will do pretty good on the test. Because if you 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 woke up at eight o'clock in the morning to review, you're nailing it, I'm pretty sure. So I'm gonna post a poll about the units, because we we don't have a really focus, we don't really have like a main focus. A unit a unit focus on this on this um stream, we're gonna, I'm gonna take uh Q and As in the beginning and I will do, I have a lot of F R Q practices that will be helpful. And then I'll post a poll about the reviews, the unit reviews that you guys might like think you need more practice in. If you guys, you can you can put, you can start putting your questions, yeah, okay, yeah, in the question, in the question box. I hope all of you guys are doing well. They are, how many days left for the test? What, ten days? Ten days left for the test, I believe, your test? So we have, let's see, it's gonna take a little bit of time, sorry. We have. Okay. Okay, so take a couple of seconds to answer the poll I posted. Okay, so Abigail, Abigail, this is great question, we're gonna be covering, I'm gonna be talking about the resources that College Board has provided for us for AP students and teachers. Um, so the College Board has like um, if you, okay, so if you go, let me bring up the the thing, the steps kind of where to get, where to go to access it. On my AP, AP, if you guys are using it, my AP is like a AP classroom full of like full of uh, full of like resources and questions and multiple choice questions and F R Qs for specific tests during the year for me. For me, uh, my teachers would use it to actually use it as a as like a unit test or as a unit test, yeah, as like an alternative to the test you actually take in class. Which I think is pretty helpful, because that's a great way to prepare for the test. Honestly, guys, you guys, if you wanna prepare for the test, obviously, knowing your content is very important, but practice, practice makes honestly, if practice, like if you do at least like you guys have enough time, pretty sure you guys have enough time, you have more than ten days. So I would, like your F R Qs should not take that long. Well, no, no, okay, no, no, no. Take that, I'm just gonna take that away, because they're actually timing you, so I would say, for me, I'm doing like two F R Qs every day for my for my AP classes, for my other AP classes, I think you should be able to get to get an at least maybe half of the half of the half of the F R Qs they they have on the College Board, they have, I think, twenty five. And I would say start with the ones that you are weak on, like the 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 units you're weak on. So let me see, you guys answered, you guys said agriculture and political unit, okay. So start with those maybe, because they they also have the they have them by unit, which is very helpful. I really like what the College Board is doing and the resources they're providing, okay, so that's a lot of talking. So you you can go to the College Board and then go to my AP or and then go I don't have a visual, but you can go to the I don't know if I can, can I, you guys, you guys are familiar with my AP, I'm assuming, right? Okay, so if you're not, we can maybe try to go there. Okay, 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 so you guys are familiar, okay. So go to my AP and then go to AP HUG classroom, if you're taking more than more than one AP class, you might have more than one classroom. And then you go to optional practice and then start practicing, you have and the good thing, the good thing is about about this is that they actually give you the the answer key, which is great, you're literally, like you actually can grade yourself, and that's how you learn, if you don't grade yourself you're not like, you're actually doing the work, okay, but you're not you know, you're not like, you're not learning from your mistakes, mistakes that you're making. So that's 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 very important. Please, guys, do it, you have enough time, don't complain. We got what, week, week and a half, work it hard and then you're done, no more AP, no more AP tests anymore. So yeah. Okay, so we have more people showing up. So we're just, for the people that are just showing up, we're just answering some answer answering some questions right now, so if you have any questions, drop them down in the ask question section. And then we will do some F R Q practice after. So Okay, so we have here population unit. Okay, we can the thing is that we have because I'm not, I don't have slides, but I can, I don't have specific slides, but I can pull up stuff from the five of all, like from our database. So I'm not sure, okay, I I because usually we don't share slides for Q and As, because they're supposed to be like general, like key answers and questions. So I'm not sure, but are you able you should, actually, if you you should be able to access the older older replays. Okay, I'll see, I I might be able to do that, I'm not sure, because it's, they're not, they're not created by me, but we're able to reuse them. Okay, so we'll answer the questions, start putting some questions in the ask question. Okay, so we'll start answering some questions. Okay, so we have first question, okay, can you explain stimulus diffusion? And give examples. Okay, so stimulus diffusion is the diffusion of an idea or a phenomenon where the idea itself is diffused, but as it's diffused, there are some changes that occur to the idea. So exactly, I mean, a great example we see in most textbooks are like fast food restaurants, like McDonald's. For example, like McDonald's serves a lot of like beef, right, like not beef. So there's a lot of burgers, right, that have beef in them, right? And they also have chicken, right, they also have chicken burgers. But if you like, if we see like McDonald's in other parts of the world, like India, where they're Hindus, right? So culturally, it's not acceptable to eat beef, because cows are sacred, right? So you're not gonna see, you are not gonna see beef on in beef on the menu of McDonald's in that part of the part of the world, right? So I think that would be a great example, and I think it's pretty easy to explain. I think another example with, I would say like a more like fun stuff to talk about is the print um the the fingerprint, the look, what is it called? The lock screen, like to open your lock screen, right, you have to use a fingerprint. So I was talking about it last time, I don't remember what phone it was. But I know that uh iPhone started with that, right, in the beginning, iPhone started with that. But Samsung kind of like in the very recent years with their last phones that they um that they released the finger, like an iPhone, you have to use the button, right, the home button to unlock it. But for Samsung right now, I think the S ten, you actually can unlock it, put like, putting your finger where uh in whatever spot on the on the phone. So that's that's kind of, that's kind of stimulus, right, the idea of unlocking your phone using your fingerprint. The idea is still there, but it's kind of like really modified. Modified, right, and changed a little bit, I hope that makes sense. Okay. So next question we have, can you explain, oh, let me start, okay. So can you explain interregional and intra-regional migration migration more and then examples? So intra means within, okay, that prefix, like just know that the difference between the prefixes to be able to understand the vocabulary word. So intra means within, so intra-regional migration is a migration from a region to region within the same country, with the same political borders, right, the same political borders. While interregional is the opposite, right? So migration out, migration from a country to another country. So intra-regional migration, for example, if I'm living in California and I go to study, maybe in New York, right, I go to study in New York, that would be an example of intra-regional migration. Or I got a work, wherever very work, very good work opportunity in your New York, I would travel, I would just take my stuff and go there, so that's that's intra-regional, because we are within the same country, the US. But uh for, and I said intra, right, I said interregional, yeah, interregional. But interregional would be like traveling from from two countries, like two different countries. So I would say like, it's kind of like when you're explaining this stuff, it's good to like like throw in there other other vocab vocabulary words. So I would say like for me, if, I don't know, like that just came up to my to my head, I would talk about refugees, right? Refugees in the Middle East right now, maybe because I'm the, I'm from there, so it's kind of like, this comes up to my mind, I don't know. But okay, so uh I would say talk about like political ref refugees and just like refugees because of like war in Syria, that they they would be considered uh interreg, they they would be like the migration they would be doing to leave the country, that would be interregional, right? A lot of them go to Turkey, Turkey and the surrounding uh borders, country borders, like Iraq and what is it, Jordan? Okay, no, Lebanon, sorry, Lebanon, yeah, okay, so they would move from Syria and then relocate somewhere else in another country. So I think that's good explanation, so I hope that makes sense. Explain maladop adaption. Where is it, where is the question? Oh, okay, so it appears based on votes, okay, okay, so we'll we'll Ooh, we got a lot of questions to answer. Okay. Okay, can you also talk about the challenges of sovereignty? Okay, I can talk, the thing is that I don't have a guide in front of me right now, so I'm just like trying to remember what stuff were we're like covered in the unit, but let me see. So we might be able to cover the political unit after, if we have enough time, hopefully. So I would, I would, I would, where is, where are the questions, okay? So I would, I would, I would just touch on that a little bit. So challenges of sovereignty. So I think the thing that always comes to my mind are like ethnic minorities, ethnic minorities that are very nationalistic and that kind of are like very ethnically, culturally different from the rest of the rest of the people living in a country. So an example of that would be Spain. Right, the cat in Catalonia, we had the people there. See, like um the, it's the northern part of Italy, uh Italy, the northern part of Spain. And it's kind of like geographically also disconnected, so you can say also like the geography, the geography of the uh the shape, we were talking about shapes of states, right, last week, I believe I was, I was doing that last week. So the geography of a place to plays an important like role in sovereignty. But talking more specifically, ethnic minorities and the desire for them to uh be thing, just to govern themselves and create their own, their own sovereign state, that would be a challenge to sovereignty. And Yugoslavia is like a great example of that, right? You have so many ethnic minorities in there, and then when the during the balkanization, they kind of all like separate cut, like they're, like they cut the country into pieces and then based on, based on, I think, similarities or, I mean, differences, sorry. Okay, can you talk about the law of the sea? Can you talk about the law of the sea? So law of the sea, so this is basically like the international law that most countries are supposed, okay, but I don't have the thing on front of me, I can't really I don't remember the different, okay, let me bring it up, let me bring it up and try to bring it up. So let me bring up the different phases, because I don't remember the different phases. Sorry, guys. Okay. Okay, so I would Oh god, really sorry, guys. Oh, actually, I forgot something very important. How, can you you guys can see my editing here, right, okay, you guys can see my editing. Sorry, guys, okay, so I don't know if you guys know, if you guys have watched the um the videos from the College Board talking about the test, they're so important, guys. So if you guys have not watched them, please do. Please do. And we can watch them together right now too, if you guys have not. So wait. Okay. So let's talk about the law of the sea. Okay, so they're basically like four phases, four different territorial territories extending from the coast of a country's of a country's, extending from the coast of a of a country's border. So the first phase, the first like section is like well, the first section is like internal waters, the waters are very close to the baseline of the foreign country, so those don't really count, but we have the territorial waters, that are the closest closest um to the territory and those would be basically, the country has complete control over the first twelve miles, except first twelve, the first twelve miles. And then the second twelve miles are called contagious zones. And those are contagious, right? So we're talking about like things that might contaminate the land and might eventually affect, right, affect the country and the water of the country, right? So that would be, though in that region, countries, foreign sovereign countries are able to impose laws that like kind of talk about regulating pollution, taxation and immigration, right? Who can enter our country, how can they enter our country? Immigration would be, I think, Turkey, right, Turkey, like again, going back to like Syrian refugees in Turkey, there are a lot of uh Syrian refugees that migrate illegally, migrate illegally because of the whole thing, right? Political stuff going on in Syria, but migrating, migrating illegally to Turkey. And I think a lot of them, the land is Cyprus, where the island where Turkey has control of, the northern part of it. So I think that would be a great example of contagious zone, because it kind of prevents like the Turkish uh Turkish soldiers are like militaries, kind of like preventing them from coming in, because there's so many and like very hard to support that many immigrants. And then the the one we always talk about and the one, the face that has a very like controversy and very like disputed kind of zone is the exclusive economic zone. And because it deals with money, right? Everything that deals with money, everybody is vying for that, right? Everybody is vying for power and for money. So that's why it's very, there are a lot of like problems with that zone. And that's why basically a country can actually access the resources within that ocean, that part, that sea area. And then we have the international waters where basically nobody has any control, because it's just international, nobody really has control. Wait, wait. Model, okay, okay. Okay, so international, sorry for that. For international water, nobody has any control. And then if uh the South China Sea is an example of the uh the dispute, right, dispute in the exclusive economic zone. There are like five countries that are actually like fighting over that that land, because it's so rich in resources, right? And China is kind of like dominating the challenge. They're like China, Taiwan, Philippines, what else, Vietnam. They're all kind of internationally are fighting for the, to uh to control that land, because whoever controls, controls or actually, there are I think it costs party islands, party islands, there are some, there are very tiny islands in there. So everybody's kind of wants to control these islands, because whoever controls these islands could actually access the resources in that land, right? So I hope that makes sense, that was a long donation. Okay, so we'll go back to our questions. Okay, so good. Ooh, what happened? Okay, we'll just leave it like that then. Is there a way to minimize this, but like not, like make it completely big? Okay, yeah, okay, that makes sense. I'm so bad at tech, okay. So we're done with the law of the sea. Okay, Esker, we gotta look it up, because I Okay, I'm very sorry, guys, I'm just trying to look like, show up the curves. Because I think it's, it will be easier to understand, I'm very sorry, okay. I can't find a good Okay, this is a good Okay, I think this is a good one, okay, okay. Let me see if I can get this on the Okay. Uh, right here. Okay, okay. Just a second, guys, sorry. Done now. Sorry for that, guys, I had to give a Okay. Okay, so did we get it, did we get the S curve on? Let's see. Oh, it's blurry, what is this? Okay, we just, I'll talk about it from the other, we don't need to, okay, okay. So we're talking about diffusion and the S curve. Okay, so diffusion is just basically, right, it's the spread of an idea or of people or of something, a phenomena from one place to another, right? And then the S curve So that X curve basically shows like a growth of It shows the growth of one variable over time, right? So Let me see if I can. Internet here is very heavy, because so many people are at home and everybody is using wifi. Okay, I'm not, okay, we're not gonna, I'm not gonna get you Okay, I'm not, okay, we're not gonna, I'm not gonna get you that thing because like can't find a good model, everything. Is blurry or either not showing enough. I don't think it's a good idea to look up stuff right now. Okay, we'll move on and then we'll can. We can, we can cover that actually in the diffusion, if we have enough time, going back to the, going back to the. Uh population and population diffusion chapter. Okay, for our question, the first question, right? The whole agricultural stuff, um we have to cover the. We have to go back to the unit, so we'll we'll cover agriculture briefly, I hope, I hope, hope very briefly before we. Before we like finish with this, so uh second question, explain mala adoption. Mala adaption is basically the. Let me see, it's basically the failure. To adapt to changes in the environment. Yeah, so it's basically if when somebody migrates from a place to another place, there might be a lot of like external, right, changes. Especially in the environment, so being able like uh from, you can just like like guess the meaning from the. root of the word, mala means bad, and then ad- adaption means. Adopting, right? So it's bad, it's being, it's ha- like being. Yeah, so it's basically a failure to adapt to changes in the environment and this can be due to migration. Oh, okay, we have a lot of model questions and honestly, those take long to explain. So what what I would, what I would say is that. We next Tu- next Tuesday, yes, I would be host, I would be hosting a whole stream about just the models and AP hug. So I would highly encourage you guys to tune in in that stream next Tuesday, right, at seven P M. So please tune in into that stream to talk about the models, because the models are very long and if we're gonna explain it, we're not gonna have enough. Time to do other stuff that we're prepared for, so I hope that's okay with you guys. Okay. Next question we have. Uh explain the concept of rent dentism. So, this is. Those are a lot of vocabu- vocabulary, so that's good that you guys are actually doing that, so it's basically. The desire for a country to restore a piece of land that eh in the past years it had, like it had. And now it no longer has control over. So, I would say an example of that would be, if does that make sense, right? So the desire for a sovereign country to regain. A piece of land that it previously owned in the past, so Kashmir. In India is a good example of that, Kashmir belongs, it used to belong to India, right, under the, under the. Does Mexico really want California back? Like especially if you know, I don't, I don't think that's a good example. Because basically it does not really want California back, like, no, no, I wanna say that's a good example, but. Like it's actually like it's a critical conflict, it's like it's creating a conflict contention between these nations, that's like how intense it is. So Kashmir is a great example of that, Kashmir is uh located in the north. East of in use, like India, right, but I think it's part of the. Bangladesh, right, no, no, what we have. What is it? It's part of, what is it right now, part of? Kashmir, 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 let me look it up. Yeah, so it's part of Pakistan, okay, okay, that was right, I was right then, okay. So yeah, it's part of Pakistan right now, so and there's all attention with these two new two nations. About because of that chunk of land. There's so many questions, okay. Can law of the sea cause nationalism? I would say. I mean potentially, but I would like work currently right now, the law of this sea is more so much political, like it's not. I would say. Well, potentially, yes, but I won't write that, on the F R Q. Like because if you think of it, there are a lot of countries that depend heavily on fishing, on fishing and the resources that are provided, so like the Philippines. Especially the Philippines, so if they're kind of like. If they're, if that like opportunity is taken away from them, they're basically gonna be very mad, right? And that can cause nationalism, a lot of tensions, but nationalism is more like. It's more of like, oh, like my na- my nationality is like su- like, like. It's. It can, but I won't write that, like, it can, it can in the situation, looking at the situation, but in current day are. Are the law of the sea dispute like Sou- Southern Asia, it's very political, like it goes, these disputes go onto the U- United Nations and then. Even the the U S is involved in it, maybe the U S does not have any claim, right? Doesn't have any claim into that region. But U S is superpower, right? So it kind of controls a lot of the political affairs going on in the world. Hope that makes sense. Okay, the baby bust, what's about the, what's about the baby bust? Okay, so just like a very brief, very fast explanation, the baby bust is um. The like, kind of like the decrease, the instant decrease of the. Of birth rate and. If it's instant, right, it can be caused by a lot of fa- a lot of factors, a lot of like um. Medical factors, right, if. I don't know, but if a population is not very well. If that like it's reasons malnutrition, right, women are not very healthy, so that can lead to baby bust. Or many developed countries kind of like just with the with the introduction, eh with the use of contracep- uh receptions. We see like, but it's not a, it's not a, it's not instant, right? It's ki- kind of gradual and it's kind of developing with the country, so I won't say that's a good example. But I would say. Yeah, I hope that makes sense. Uh let's see, is the news really important for the F R Qs? If so, how do we study that? What do you mean for the F R Qs? Like, like the stuff we're doing today or generally like the. AP hug, like the stuff on my AP, I'm not sure, just nasty say that again, or type it, type it. On the AP exam, that's basically what. Wait, wait, sorry. Let's see. Oh, okay, okay, so like the news from the college, oh, actually, you reminded me, yes. Do you guys wanna, do you guys wanna uh kind of talk about the test or something like that? Because the college board, let me, let me share my screen, because the college board. The college board. Posted two ta- two videos yesterday on their website, on their YouTube website. Talking about all of information and how to prepare for the test date. So I don't know if you guys wanna watch it, me can, maybe we can watch it next week because. We're kind of short on time, right? And we're doing a lot, we have a lot to review. So we can do that next week if you guys don't know, I don't know, what what do you guys want? Tell me, tell me the in the, in the. Tell me the chat, what do you guys want? You wanna watch it right now or we can do it next week because we're getting closer to the test? Okay, let's review. Yeah, it's it's a review session, that makes sense. But it's very important, we ha- we kind of have to like. All features are actually enforcing, like people, like their students actually like go and. Like watch the videos because like it's very important, like it's important for the test. Can you talk about uh agribusinesses and the sup- uh and supplying commodity chains? So uh. Agribusinesses are basically, I would say the, what is it called, what is the word called? The using of agriculture to. What is the word called? Forgot the word. Okay, commercializing, yeah, commercializing, so very sorry. Using agriculture to com- commercialize, right, to commercialize the production of stuff, right? And that kind of happened because, and this is due to, like, basically, we're we're planting stuff. To sell them, not to use them, right, for not for. Yeah, not to use them, and this is possible because of, you know, the advances in chemistry, using the fertilizer, advances in. In machinery, right? You like you really need like less manual work, so that will increase production and that will. Make it possible for businesses to actually sell the stuff that they're making. And then the supply and commodity chain is um is basically like this, like the the steps by which. A com- like uh something is a product is like being manufactured and made, right, and then sold. So for example, like, let's say like, like uh the brand, right, H and M, right? It's a U S brand, right, but a lot of them are manufacturers in China, most famous brands, right? All their manufacturing is in China and India, like very like outs- like uh uh countries that really have very low. Like becau- because it requires so much less money, right, for labor wages, right, in those countries? So, they're kind of like getting the yarn, right, weaving it, right, making the, making the. Different parts of a shirt, right, and then putting that all together, all these different steps occur in different. Facilities or different. Countries, I would say depending on their experi- experience, right, like how good they are and. Obviously, money, wages, that's what matter, that's what matter, right? Money, how much profit they're making. Okay, for the fourth desert, we're not gonna do that because it's not, it's not gonna be covered on the test. So we move on because we have too many questions and we're literally forty-four minutes and that's so, oh, I'm very sorry, guys. We spent the whole time doing Q and A, okay, it's a Q and A though, that makes sense. Tell me, what do you guys wanna do after finishing this? Video link to the. Oh, video link to the, to the AP stuff, right? Okay, yeah, yeah, that's very important, we will do that, we'll do that right now, I'll do that right now. So let me copy and paste this. Okay, there are two videos, one is four minutes and the other is two minutes. Let me see. Okay, here. I hope you guys can access that, if not. I think I copied one of them wrong, there is a space between the C and the T, try to erase that when you're. When you're. Let me, just try it, if it works, it works, if it doesn't, if it doesn't use the same uh like. Channel, the advanced placement channel, to go back to the other chat, to the other video, okay. How will this year different another time to complete it? Will it be more based on graphs? How will the F R Q this year be different from other than the time to complete it? Will it be more based on graphs? I won't say it would be more based on graphs because in the, like in the description, they talk about there will be one stimulus. But I would say it's more based on graphs. I think I I'm giving an assumption, one will give you a stimulus, the other will not give you a stimulus, I would say that the shorter one will give you a stimulus because it's gonna be. Gonna be easier, right? It's gonna be, well, explaining a stimulus might be. Well, it varies, it varies, because it varies in how long the ta- the question is and how many parts there are. So I won't say it's based, it's based on uh more on based on graphs, but. The link doesn't work, okay. Here, let me just copy it. Oops, again. Sorry. Okay, I'm so scared, I don't wanna close the tab, there's so many tabs. Okay, here, this is the second link, the first link, again, the good one, like the one that's actually working, okay. So the only difference is the how long you're gonna take, right, and the time to upload it, so please watch the videos to be able to like be familiar with the. With the format, right, and how you're gonna be able to submit your test, so watch the videos for sure. Okay, last question, can you explain how lack of development can lead to failed state? Lack of development lead to failed state, let me see. I always have to come up with examples, right, to explain the stuff I'm coming up with, so let me see Somalia. Somalia is a great example of that, Somalia is so rich in resources. But yet it is such a failed state, like honestly, it's. It's very undeveloped, right? There are no resources, right? People are kind of very suffering, very suffering, right? And this is, like, even though the country is so rich, but because of the corruption in the country, it's very like lacking development and this lack, like. Because it's so much undeveloped, right, there is no really any resources for the people, right, and kind of like they're like these um. Like people that are coming into power, but they're basically just like, kind of like terrorists. That are basically getting control of the land there and the the Somali uh Somali, the triangle created by Somalia and. And Asia, that triangle of land, they basically are like, basically, that line is very dangerous because they, these like kind of pirates. They act like pirates, I would say, but they control that coast and whoever actually accesses that part kind of gets like. Robbed, their ships get stolen. So. That's a result of, that's a very failed state, right, because the country is so lacking, right? There, there's no control, like, there are no resources, right? Even when people get sick, you can't really get, go to a doctor, and even if they can, they might have to travel for so long. Even the access for water, right, you see a lot of like advertisements or like uh fundraising, for fundraisings for Af- uh Af- uh people living in Africa that are. Suffering, lack of development, right? People are like can't even access water, then have access to clean water, they have to travel. For miles to access just water, something that's so simple and so needed. So that's that. We answered seventeen questions, that was so long, okay, okay, we'll do one of our queue. Okay, okay, so I know many of you guys are gonna be doing, uh want to do agriculture, since we don't have enough time. What we will do is that we will cover, because I I I know I made, I made. What we will do is that we will cover cuz I I I know I made I made sure I had a ag- agriculture um. Agriculture thing, agriculture. F R Q, so we'll do agriculture F R Q and then we can do the other ones if we have enough time. If that is that cool with you guys to just review a little bit of agriculture? Is that cool? Good? No? Yes? Yes? No? Okay, so we'll do agriculture. Let's see, where is the agriculture? I had it, oh, and it's with the stimulus too, so that's good, okay, so it's this one. Okay, so don't like write paragraphs, but. Let me make this bigger so you don't see my face. Oh, I'm very sorry, you can, are you guys, you guys are not able to see the whole thing, right? Are you? Tell me if you're able to see the whole slide, the all the questions, no? Okay, now you can, okay. Okay, so we have a stimulus here, right? We have kind of like marked. Couple of marked question, marked um marked answers. Okay, so agriculture systems such as the production of coffee, so we're talking about coffee. Are part of global network, so before starting, when we're talking about coffee and we have these selected countries, or what do we know about these countries and what kind of. Agriculture, right? Agricultural stuff they're producing. Describe a common characteristic shared by coffee-producing countries down shown on the map. So write something really fast, right? Really fast in the in the chat. To talk to address that question. Describe a common characteristic shared by coffee-producing countries shown on the map. So something they have in common, right? We're talking about agriculture, agriculture, right? And look at the contrary, how. Developing or undeveloping they are, right? Right? And what do we know about coffee, right? What do we know about production of coffee, right? Like if we're Africa, for example. What do we know? How is it produced, right? Do we have machinery? Do we not have machinery? There is very like the question is very generic, right? Just telling you choose one of these countries and talk about it, how is coffee? Kind of being produced there. Oh, no, 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 never mind, I read it wrong. Common characteristic shared by coffee-producing countries, common, so they all have. These characteristics are gonna be kind of shared because they're producing coffee. Okay, so we have some questions. Uh some answers, sorry. Okay, so okay, so they're located, right? You're talking about the the location, right? The environment, right? The located um. They're located very close to the equator, right? Because because coffee requires. The production of coffee requires that kind of environment, so that's a very good one, a very like easy one to get, right? Cuz it makes sense, if you look at the graph, they're basically all around the crater. Physiological density is high, right? Physi- what what was physi- physiological uh physiological density again, guys? What is physiological density? That's a good, that that's a very good term, the very good thing to bring up. What's physiological density, guys? The density of. The amount of people per unit of agricultural land, yeah, for arable land, that's correct. Okay, so let's move on to the the next question, explain two impact of coffee farming. On producing countries, so the impact of producing. Coffee on countries, right? What is it gonna cause? What kind of factors and changes it's gonna it's gonna it's gonna cause within a country? Okay, so think of the environment, right? As a factor, right, that can be affected economy, right? The. Jobs, right? So we're producing, we're producing, we're heavily dependent on producing. Coffee, so more jobs are gonna be available, right? Let's see one of the questions, not that sustainable, yes, that's good, so what does that mean? What kind of changes are gonna happen if it's not that sustainable, right? Producing coffee is not that sustainable, what 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 kind of effect is gonna have? It's gonna have on the environment, right? So that's a, those are very good answers you guys are putting in there. Yeah, it's harmful, yeah, producing coffee is harmful, so it's gonna affect the environment, it's gonna affect the environment. The those questions are actually, th- those are pretty good, pretty good, okay. I don't know if I explained one way increased coffee consumption outside of coffee-growing areas. Effect its production. So if we increase, let's say in the US, right? I think we consume a lot of coffee, right? A lot of Starbucks, right? We have a lot of Starbucks in here, so if we increase. The production, the consumption of that, what is that gonna put, what kind of stresses is that? I'm kind of giving the answer, what kind of changes that's gonna happen in those countries or those uh. Workers that are farmers that are producing that? What kind of changes that can have have on these on these farmers? Or not these farmers, not not specifically farmers, but like the just the production in coffee, it does not have to be specific like. Yes, farmers can be fixed off, but we can go outside of. Carrying capacity agricultural farm, hmm, like just you're like you're like saying that. So you're basically saying that like the hmm, like the country is not like the land is not able. Or is like no longer fertile, so it can't really produce that because there's so much stresses. But I mean, that can be a factor, yes, I would say that's that's a valid question. But with the technologies we have, like a lot of these farmers actually use fertilizers. Well, depending on the develops or not, like I was saying Brazil and South America and Central America, yes. But Africa, maybe not, maybe cuz they don't have the access, the right resources. So I would say yes, that that can be a valid answer. Yeah, I would, I was looking for that, I'm more depend on pre- on more demand on on workers. And especially if like in Africa where they're lacking resources, so the only way to speed up that production is to actually work harder. Cuz they don't have, like there is no technological thing or machine or fertilizer that will increase that production of. The coffee or the product, whatever they're producing, so yes, I would say that. Okay, so next question, explain one change. Uh oh, the thing is covered, okay, explain one change in the. Let me read it from the outside, okay. So, whoa, whoa, okay. So explain one change in the urban landscape in the in in the developed world, so developed world associated with the coffee consumption. Guys, make sure to read the question very good, so like these like. Are you answering F R Qs? Like this key word, developed countries, right? Developed countries, that's a keyword, right? They're uh basically wants to talk about specific things. Make sure to like, if you're like, if that helps you, right? Don't do it if it doesn't help you. But if it helps you like to mark down the this key vocabulary word or to like. Yeah, to mark down the vocabulary word and to actually. To actually answer the question, yeah, telling you to explain, so you're answering the question, how is it? What are these some kind of changes associated with coffee consumption and how are they changed? Why are they changes? Why is that important? How is that gonna effe- like explaining is kind of more than just identifying, right? Okay, so what are some changes that can happen in the developed countries, like in the US, the Europe, East Western Europe, Eastern Western Europe, I would say, yeah. Or more Western Europe, it's more diverse. Okay, so what's some changes that can happen in developed countries that will affect coffee consumption? What kind of companies that are created, hint? That consume a lot of coffee, another hint. Since there is a lot of demand for coffee, the developed co- uh the world, there will be an increase in coffee shops. Increased coffee shops, that's a great one, that's like a plus two, plus one, whatever the funny points that question is, that's that's very good one, yeah. Many businesses would be created like Starbucks, great.
Ella, more of a demand for coffee in the urban landscape and increasing. Prevalency of places to buy coffee to supply needs of the population, which is why you migrate to Starbucks very frequently.
Yes, those are great ques- great answers, guys, good job, you guys are doing pretty good. Those are, you actually are is is answering the question and very, 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 very good. So also we q- we're talking coffee shops, right? We can also see more specialized coffee shops. Coffee shops that. Yeah, more specialized coffee shops. Like where they would have like Starbucks, right? Starbucks, we have like study, like a place to study, right? There is free Wi-Fi. So that would be kind of more specialized coffee shops, like it's not where you just like like seven eleven where you just go and buy. Buy s- buy buy coffee whenever you want it, but it's kind of like focus on coffee, but you have other. Kind of uh what is it called? Like services provided with that to kind of like in uh uh attract more customers. So yeah, we're kind of done with this session? Okay, so we have one question, one question, I think it's a point one, talking about F R Q, okay. So how long should an F R Q be? My typed F R Q is only half page long, but when I handwrite it, it is one and a half page long. Honestly, there is no limit how long it is, but I would say you have to like. I would say that your F R Q should not be too long. Because you need to have enough time to answer all the questions and ma- make sure like you have like, especially for the first one. Sorry, guys. Especially for the first F R Q, it's multiple like sections, so make sure you have enough time and to time yourself right, right? Don't write stuff that are not important, just answer the question and give an example or two and that's it, like it doesn't have to be that long. And I would say make sure to know how you're gonna submit the test. That's why I watch the videos, I said, watch the videos, I said, now, right now, after we're done, after we're done, watch the videos, because. You can type it or you can handwrite it, so whatever is. Whatever, like if you're a good typer, you're a ma- you're a fast typer, you can type it, if you're not. Then I would say handwrite it, just depending on what what you like. So yes, we are done with today, with today, with with this Q and A. I hope it was helpful for everybody. This was my first, actually, this was my first. Um my first, those are the answers for the stuff, we didn't, we didn't have time to go over them, which is okay. Uh my, that this is my first study guide, which is really fun, I really like, there's a lot of participation and there's a lot of people that actually showed up. Okay, so we are done, but don't forget, don't forget to follow. Think fiveable or fiveable at Twitter, Instagram, YouTube, Facebook and TikTok, we have Facebook. TikTok very recently, very, very recently, so yeah. And then again, I keep showing that, but if you are taking any other A P classes, don't forget to tune in into these days, to these sessions. If you're interested in the subjects or you wanna. Do better on the test. So yeah, that's it, I hope everybody has an amazing day. Stay safe, stay healthy, sleep well, go outside, get some vitamin D in. And don't forget, study. Thank you for showing up today, guys. Bye.